Okay, it is seven P M. And I do see uh my wonderful council um here. Perfect. Alright, so. Good evening. Today, Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. It is seven P M. And it is a work session for the mayor council for the city of Mount Rainier. I'm gonna go ahead and call the uh to order the meeting with my imaginary like um little tiny here. Alright Valerie Woodall.
Yeah.
Jared Stoffes.
I'm here.
Luke Chesek.
Here.
Who tricks me and puts mix name right before he joins and every time I'm like, yes, and then no. Danielle. Danielle.
I'm here.
Alright, moving on to item number two. Um and before Valerie reads the agenda. Uh so point of information, the arts um, the arts commission um item. Uh item number three, they won't, they'll be postponing their uh attendance to this meeting, so they will not be here. So they're gonna be removed from the agenda. Okay? Just as an F Y I, so Valerie um. You don't have to read it. I think we could just, you can move on to the next one. We'll move everything else up. So. The next item will be the next number three. And you know, if we have consensus, we'll remove it. So that way you don't have to read the whole paragraph council. We have consensus to remove from the agenda since they've been asked to postpone. I see thumbs up from um everyone unanimously on it. Okay, perfect. Go ahead Valerie.
Yeah, thank you. So um agenda for the work session. Mayor and city council, city of Mount Rainier, virtual work session, Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Items for discussion, one, call to order. We just did that. Two, review of agenda, five minutes. The mayor and city council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number now three, uh presentation and discussion on ordinance number zero three dash twenty twenty five budget amendment number two, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have a discussion on ordinance number uh zero three twenty twenty five. Um, number four proclamation proclaiming April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day, five minutes. Mayor Selena Benitez will present proclamation for Arbor Day. Number five, um proclamation proclaiming April as National Arab American Heritage Month, five minutes. The mayor. Mayor Selena Benitez will present a proclamation for Arab American Heritage Month. Number six, presentation of minutes, five minutes. The city clerk will present the following minutes to the mayor and council, April first, twenty twenty five legislative meeting and proposed F Y twenty six. Budget meeting, April eighth, public hearing and proposed F Y twenty six budget work session. Number seven, adjournment. You're on mute.
Uh bottom of the events for the events, I'll read them. Um just wanna make sure, cause they're part of the uh agenda, right? That's a change that we made to make sure we uh try not to forget, although there's a thousand events going on. So for upcoming events, we have the. Egg hunt will be held April twenty sixth from eleven to one P M at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. The city elections will be held May fifth from seven A M to eight P M at the Rainier Center. Gateway's Open Studio be on Saturday, May tenth from noon to five P M. And our big Mount Rainier day will be Saturday, May twenty four. From eleven to four at the nature center. So we definitely wanna thank all of our sponsors. And as you can see, uh one of them that's been very dedicated to work and collaborates is the Mount Rainier Nature Center. So. Thank you to the whole entire team for like, um, you know, joining forces with us. We definitely appreciate the work that they do in order for us to come together. Alright, perfect. Um so the agenda has been reviewed, the number uh three has, uh the new number three is um. Presentation and discussion on ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty five budget amendment number two. Um, the mayor council will have a discussion ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty five. I will seat the floor to Mister Kamali. Mister Kamali, let me know if you need me to seat the floor to Ron Wilson. Alright, so the floor is yours, Mister Kamali.
Right, thank you, mayor and council. Yes, I will uh need Ron Wilson to to proceed, please.
Okay, so Ron Wilson, the floor is yours. Thank you, Mister Kamali.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, can you scroll down to the um, the um worksheet that I put together for the budget modifications?
So this is the first reading of this document, Melly?
Yeah, um mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually just presenting tonight what our um recommendations are. Uh and then we'll have discussion a- and then whatever comes out of that discussion, we will, we will have a. Um and and ordinance to read at the legislative meeting on May sixth.
Thank you so much, Ron. I'm sure it's clear so that we know and we've, you know how, you know how um specific I am, just like you guys with procedures. I'd rather be all of us in the same page. So thank you for that. So Melly, can you move it to the screen that Ron Wilson was talking about?
Do you have that, Melissa?
I think she's putting it up right now.
Okay.
Excellent sheet.
Let me increase the vision on this, cause you guys are gonna have me go blind. Go on. Go ahead, uh Ron.
Okay, thank you. So what you're seeing here uh is uh all of the budget um modifications that that we're recommending. And it it is in two different sections. The first section is normal operating budget modifications. Uh and and that's split between revenue and expense items. And then the second section is the grants. Uh and that's also split between revenue and expense. So. Uh the reason that I wanted to use this instead of reading from the draft um ordinance is that this has descriptions next to each of the line items. And and it would be, I think, more informative for you. So the first item is um i- in the revenue section for operating budget is forty seven oh seven use of fund balance. This is for Potts Hall. We originally um set the budget last spring at a million dollars. And we will need to increase that by a million and a half to a total of two and a half million. And and that's to finish off um Potts Hall um over and above all of the external financing that. We have for the, for the Potts Hall project. Then in the expense section, line zero one fifty seven oh one, which is Potts Hall Welcome Center. This is the offsetting expense to that revenue item. Um i- increasing from one million to two and a half million dollars. Next, we have zero one fifty six hundred P D. Um a- all of the remaining items here in this section are to um find budget room for the police department. Building repair that Mister Kamali discussed with you uh previously. So the first item, zero one fifty six hundred P D, um we are adding sixty four thousand three hundred dollars to their. Building maintenance budget to bring it up to a total of seventy five. That way we have room for the sixty five thousand dollar roof repair that's needed. Um, we are taking that from various other line items, uh one, zero one fifty six hundred city hall. We're reducing their building maintenance budget by fifteen thousand to a net of three thousand. Zero one fifty six hundred public worths. We are reducing their building maintenance budget by ten thousand. To a net of twelve thousand. The next three items, uh this is actually some good news. The. Actual expense for the retirement contribution for this year came in a good bit less than what we had budgeted for. So we um, we are moving some of that budget authority uh to make room for the police department roof repair. So first of all is zero one fifty one oh seven police department. We're reducing their. Uh retirement plan budget by thirty one thousand five hundred to a net of one hundred and seventy five thousand eight hundred and seventy four. Uh zero one fifty one oh seven city hall. We're reducing their budget by twenty eight hundred dollars to a net of twenty nine thousand seven seventy. And then zero one fifty one oh seven administrative services. We're reducing their budget. For retirement plan contributions by five thousand to a net of thirty four thousand and fifty eight dollars. All told, in the operating section, we are um. Uh i- increasing expenses by a million five sixty four three hundred, reducing other expenses by sixty four thousand three hundred. The net change is the million and a half dollars for the Potts Hall. The next section is is grants. And um this, we do this every year. Uh when we set the budget in the spring. We um, we have two challenges. One, we, we don't always know which grants we're going to have and. Some get added and that's why we need to amend the budget. And then secondly, sometimes we will grant for. Or or we will budget for grant expenses in a particular year. A- and because of the nature of the work that gets done, sometimes those expenses don't all happen in that year and and need to be rebudgeted. Uh in part or whole in the next fiscal year. So that's what we're doing in this section. We're adding a bunch of new grants. And we're also um adding back some uh some budget for expenses that did not get spent in the previous year. So the first item is ARPA. Um, that's uh zero three forty six ninety eight. Uh we are increasing the revenue by three hundred and thirty thousand to a million seven hundred and forty eight. And and the reason for that will become clearer when I get to the expense section. Uh all of these revenue items have offsetting expense grants that we budget uh and account for grants always to net to zero. The next line is zero one forty seven hundred point forty five Richardson Park. Uh we are uh adding a hundred and five thousand seven hundred and twenty six dollars. The next one is zero one forty seven hundred point forty six, the State of Maryland Capital Grant for Potts Hall. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're adding. The next line is zero one forty seven hundred point forty nine. Uh P G County Richardson Park, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Zero one forty seven hundred point forty. Uh that's the thirty fourth street facade phase two. We're adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The next line is zero one forty seven hundred point forty three, project restore two point zero. We're adding two hundred and eighty eight thousand eight hundred. The next line is zero one forty seven hundred point fifty one. That's the solar, solar panels for the city buildings from the M E A. Uh that's four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Zero one forty seven hundred point forty seven. This is a mural grant from the D H C D for ten thousand dollars that we're adding. Zero one forty seven hundred point twenty one, the State of Maryland Capital Grant for the Police Basement. We're adding that in for three hundred thousand dollars. This is one of those grants that we budgeted for last year. But because of the nature of the project and some other funding sources, we didn't use any of this. Grant money in fiscal twenty four, so we have to re-budget it for fiscal twenty five. The next line is zero one forty seven hundred point forty two. That's the twenty twenty five version of the pact grant. And we're adding thirty four thousand four eleven. And then uh zero one forty seven hundred point forty four, the community grant for the police department, we're adding fourteen thousand. This is the grant that we get. Pretty much every year for national night hours and explores and things like that.
So Ron, can you give me one minute? Um we have been alerted that we have less than three minutes on the clock. I definitely would like to as um. The council for ten more minutes to be added to the clock, so that way you could finish and we could open up to questions. Uh council, uh motion on the floor for ten more minutes to be added to the um line item?
So moved.
Second Valerie. Second Valerie.
Seconded.
Cause I make the motion. Uh perfect. Any objections, abstentions here in none? Um we have adding ten more minutes to the. To the line item. Uh Ron, go ahead. I just didn't wanna like.
Do you need me to read faster?
Go ahead.
Do you need me to read faster?
You, you have um, you have a few more minutes, but go ahead.
Okay, so um the, the last uh item in the grant revenue is zero one forty seven hundred point thirty nine, the C B T pet waste. This was a ten thousand dollar grant and we, that we budgeted for last year and only spent three thousand of it last year. So we're gonna spend the other seven this year. So all told, we're adding um uh two and a half million dollars to our grant revenue budget. Um and then the next section is all of those grants on the expense side. Um. The first two lines, you you see zero three fifty seven ten and zero three fifty seven oh one. These are uh the specific ARPA items that we're adding to the budget. Uh one is Richardson Park. Uh this was a newly allocated amount after last year's budget was set. Uh and then this, the second line is the Potts Hall. Uh and this is a a scenario in which some planned expense for fiscal twenty four didn't occur and it happened in fiscal twenty five and we need to re-budget for it. Unless you want me to read all of the left, since this is just a discussion. Um all of the rest of the line items are the expense side of all the grant revenues that I, that I just.
Is the mirror.
Yeah, it's, it's the mirror to the, to the revenue. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but.
Melly, can you put it to the top of the sheet, please? And just for the ones that just joined us, this is the budget amendment and this is for this year's budget, correct, Ron? And this for unused.
This is an amendment to the fiscal twenty five budget.
Yeah, and also to clarify, when there's like the building maintenance repaired, that is money that has not been used that was originally allocated to that department. Or unused funding that now is being reallocated for other purpose. It's not uh removing anything that will be used. It's like at this point, it has to be used and. What the finance team does along with our city manager, basically like, look at the budget to figure out like if something needs to be moved, because in this case, um. You know, we needed to fix um, and the emergency came, we needed to fix um. You know, if we have to fix X Y or re- relocate funds, they go back to the budget and look at items that have not been expensed. In order for us to move within before we even touch um any of the reserves or rainy funds. So that's the way to make sure that we um. Keep our, our number for the budget or uh money that we were supposed to be used. And then if that doesn't fulfill us, right, then we go to like additional funding. Alright, perfect. So constant gonna open it up to you guys first and then the community if they have any questions. Alright, and. Okay, so I'm gonna start with uh Valerie. I'll start with you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, I don't, I think this all seems to make sense to me, I guess. Um, one question, I mean, can you go back down to the grants? Section. Yeah, so I think, I mean, obviously, we're, we're, we have, that looks like ten, ten grants that we're adding to the budget, which is pretty, pretty good for the city of Mount Rainier. So. I'm pretty impressed with that. Um and that's a lot of money that we're, we're, you're getting in grant funding. So um kudos to you all. I don't really have any other questions than that. Thank you.
Perfect. Yes, um, good point to make, Valerie. That is grand money that we have um advocated, received um and been awarded. That has been able to um subsidize um all the prices that have gone up in the city and the various things that the community have been seeking. And uh plans have been sometimes shelved for years to be able to make it happen. Uh Jared?
Yeah, no, thanks, Ron, for the clarity here, Mister Kamali, for your work here. Yeah, I just, I actually just echo Valerie's note. This is, you know. Two point five, I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of grant money, uh federal money, state money, county money, uh some nonprofit and others. Uh it's. All resources that you all were able to bring in, were able to implement stuff without um burdening our citizens with uh, the residents with um. Uh raising revenue to pay for it. So just, you know, great, great highlight. I appreciate you uh doing this and clarifying uh just the budgetary move you need to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle Luke.
Um, thank you. I was actually trying to find something in the budget. If you could just clarify something for me, and I'm really sorry that I'm not prepared for the. Meeting tonight, Mister Kamali understands why. Um, could you just explain to me where the one point five million is coming for on forty seven oh four? That's, is that grant money or is that money we actually budgeted for on the twenty second?
No, that's, that's one point five we're planning to pull from our fund balance to complete the Potts Hall project.
So that's the rainy day fund money that we have to pull out?
Unfortunately, yes.
Well, that's, that's a lot smaller than the two million that we thought it might be as high of. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mister Kamali. That's, that's the only question I have. Everything else, thank you so much. And those grants looks great. Love seeing grants.
Luke, go ahead.
No, good. No comment. Thanks. Also makes sense. And thanks, everyone, for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Alright, um, thank you, team. I know that collectively we have gone after various grants. And the other thing where it has helped when it comes to our audits, and also to make sure that we are on top of it, is like you guys are constantly going through um the budget. To what has been explained, what is like, has availability to be able to move if a need arises, but also pre-planned years ahead. And that has been um. Very um positive for the city overall, because it allowed us to be able to like work on the audits. And meetings like this allows us to have this conversation before the first reading goes into place. Because there is a procedure for us to follow through, right? In order when we read it through, we've had a discussion, we thought about it, we, we have slept on it various nights, right? And we could come back and say like, okay, this is the thought, but I think that the key has heavily been like the preparation ahead of time. And that allows us to be able to be ready for the changes that are coming. So that's something that we have heavily have um. Put our heads together and it's been a lot of work and effort for the, for the last four years, but um. It allows us to be able to get the audits on time, get the budget ready and uh just as needed through the year. And I'll tell you this, with everything that potentially might be coming up in the next few years. Um, I know our team is ready for anything, mainly because uh you guys have like prepared yourself for um, for various things as this and there's procedures in place. So in saying all of that, thank you guys so much um for the work that you've been doing on this and making sure what was like on top of it. So. I um, I'll be now up to the community in case somebody has a question, type it in the chat. Um. Let us know. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item. So Melly, do you have um? The agenda? I just see Luke on my screen and Luke, you're not the agenda. You're gonna have to run and get an agenda in front of you, Luke. Alright, got it. Thank you so much. Uh for those of us, you guys that just joined us. Originally, um there was gonna be a discussion on the mural in Rhode Island. Uh the art commissions have asked for a little bit more time, so the meeting, um they're gonna be moving the meeting, I believe, to our next meeting. So if you're here for that purpose tonight. They are not here, um but um they're gonna continue working and doing the great thing that they do. And when they're ready, they'll come back uh to meet with us. Okay? Alright, let me see. Moving on to item number four. Um and also this is a work session, so no votes are being taken place. It's more like informative. The proclamations are something that as mayor I get to do. And I usually bring them to council so that they're aware of what I'm proclaiming, you know, and I try to stay heavily within the values and the mission of the city. You know, so the next proclamation will be proclaiming May twenty A as Arbor Day. Can you put it on the screen, Melly? So this is the official proclamation. Um if you're not aware, the city of Mount Rainier is. Part of three city U S A and we'd be a member of like of that exclusive uh, you know, group for. Over a decade, easily, right? And it's been a lot of effort from our tree commission, you know, making sure like the grease initiatives are through it. And every year we get to uh proclaim the day and uh join. And every year we get to, uh, proclaim the day and, uh, join, uh, cities nationwide in celebrating trees. Alright, so, um, it goes back to eighteen seventy two. Valerie, you wanna go ahead and read it?
Sure, um, whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural, Agriculture established a s- a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed um, with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife and whereas trees are renewable or renewable resource uh, giving us paper, wood for our, uh, homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal.
I'll read the final part, um. I'm sorry. Now therefore I, Selena Arbenitez, Mayor of the City of Mount Rainier, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day in the city of Mount Rainier. And I urge all the citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and further, I urge citizens to plant trees to glade the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And this was signed on the eighth of April. And a big shout out to our tree commission, um, who does a lot of work with the trees and planting. I know Joe's had trees that helped plant it with Casey's Tree as well, so thank you guys so much for that as well. Alright, so can I move on to the next proclamation, please? Valerie, you're gonna have like a good workout today. At least you didn't have to read the whole resolution. That's coming up next time. Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. So part of the city's missions and values is to continue to create a welcoming atmosphere. And the city of Mount Rainier, I've done several proclamations when it comes to, um, heritage months. I do plan to turn this proclamation into a resolution. Usually I do a proclamation as first step because the resolutions take a little bit of longer time. But that is also, um, coming and it's gonna be more or less the same document. So that way is part of the city and not just part of like, uh, me as, as mayor. Okay, so this is, uh, the City of Mount Rainier proclamation recognizing a celebration of April as Arab American Heritage Month, um, a month, uh, that is celebrated nationally. Valerie, it is all yours.
The city of Mount Rainier is proud to honor the history, culture, heritage and contributions of Arab Americans in our community throughout Maryland and our nation. And whereas the city, uh, I'm sorry, the month of April, um, is nationally recognized and celebrated as Arab American Heritage Month since twenty seventeen. Whereas, uh, this year's theme is honoring the past, inspiring the future, reflects the, and celebrates the Arab American community, community's historical legacy, recognizing the pat, present as, present generation and inspiring the next generation of leaders and whereas for over a century, the Arab American community has been making valuable contributions to virtually every key aspect, every aspect and key roles in the advancement in the multiple fields of studies, including and not limited to the arts, culture, science, math, politics, history, business, music, sports, medicine, economic development, education, agriculture, literature, dance, hi- high technology, mil- military service and education. And whereas the history of Arab Americans in the United States is at times remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry and anti-Arab hate, um, which must be combated in forms of education and awareness. And whereas the Arab community, uh, brought with them to the US, um, resilient family values, strong work ethics, dedication to education and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas the Arab community and their descendants, uh, since migrating to the United States have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while setting fine examples of model citizens. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier will continue to work toward, uh, becoming an inclusive city in which all the community, past, present and future are respected and that the Arab American community is recognized for their contributions to our city, country and world and.
Now therefore be a resolve, I, Selena Benitez, uh, Mayor of the City of Mount Rainier, do ha- do hereby proclaim April as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Mount Rainier and every year from today and on. The City of Mount Rainier and oops, today, City of Mount Rainier, and urge all of the citizens to celebrate Arab American community heritage and culture and continue our efforts year round to create a world that's more just, peaceful, equitable and prosperous world and stand up to injustice, uh, stand up for voting rights, oppression and protection of human and civil rights. And it's, um, signed by me. So council, um, I will be bringing a resolution as well. Um, so that way is for the record. So basically it's gonna be the same document, but a different format that we're gonna go through it with vote. Okay? Alright, perfect. Thank you guys so much. And all the proclamations that have, um, I've done, you could find them on the City of Mount Rainier website, mountrainiermd.org. Under mayoral proclamations, they're all there. Alright, perfect. Moving on to the next item, item number six, presentation of minutes. Uh, the city clerk will present the following minutes to the mayor and council, April first, twenty twenty five legislative meeting and propose FY twenty twenty six budget meeting, April eighth, twenty twenty fifth, public hearing and propose FY twenty twenty six budget work sessions. Both says so minutes have, could be found in your package and they have been presented by a clerk. They'll be moved to vote. On our next, uh, legislative meeting will be held on the first Tuesday of the, of the month. In saying that, before I adjourn, I definitely wanna, um, give a big, um, uh, this month, uh, this week is actually holy week and it's so, it was also, um, pass over as well. As well as spring break for a lot of our little ones. So, um, I know our families in the community are celebrating our, you know, um, the various, um, the various celebrations with their families and loved ones, right? So happy celebration for, um, holy week, um, and everything that comes along with it. As well as, um, as well as, um, you know, the various, um, times that the little kids are passing. Okay, so stay safe with your traveling in and around the town. We definitely appreciate you. And the other thing to keep in mind, uh, we are having a budget meeting, um. We have a budget meeting coming up after this, right, Meli? Melissa?
Yes, Mayor.
Alright, so we'll end this meeting and move on to, uh, the next. Alright, so motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second.
It's probably moved in second, any, uh, discussion? Okay, abstentions, hearing none, um. The workstation for the City of Mount Rainier, Mayor and Council has come to an end and will be moving on to the agenda for the proposed FY twenty twenty six budget, uh, this legislative meeting of the Mayor and Council for the City of Mount Rainier's today, following the work session. I'm gonna do a roll call, although nobody has moved from their seat so far, it's for the record. Alright, Valerie?
Here.
Jared?
Here.
Luke?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
We have full quorum, um, number, item number two, the agenda, review of the agenda. Uh, go ahead, Valerie.
Our discussion, um, number one, call the order. We just said that. Two, review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, public comment. Number four, second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero two twenty twenty five, an ordinance, an ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending Ju- June thirty, twenty twenty six. The mayor and council will have the, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero two dash twenty twenty five, um, and number five, adjournment.
Alright, thank you so much. So this will be the second reading and adoption of ordinance O two dash twenty twenty five and or establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July first, twenty twenty five, ending in June thirty, twenty twenty six. The mayor council will have the second reading and adoption ordinance number O two dash twenty twenty five. Alright, so, uh, Mr. Kamali and Ron Wilson, the floor is yours. Oh, you're gonna go to public comment first? Alright, my bad. We'll do public comment first. Um, alright, so we are gonna, can you put the rules for public comments, Meli? That's what happens when like, I need to go get more water. Okay. Rules for public comment. The mayor and council invited welcome comments at public meetings. The mayor will, uh, or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself first and last name for recording purposes and give the name of your street and block number. IG forty three hundred block of thirty fourth street. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read the comment or you will speak on your comment. Public comments has a time limit of three minutes per speaker unless otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about a performance or conduct of any city employee, please bring it to y- your concerns to the attention of our city manager and that would be Mr. Kamali, who will look into the matter and respond to you. As a courtesy to other resident businesses, the council requests that speakers not use the specific address or names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint noting the blog is preferred over a specific address. Alright, thank you, Meli. Okay, so we're gonna be opening up the, um, the item for, uh, the public comment, name, last name, block and street number. That goes for anybody, so, and if you need me to read the comment, I could go ahead and, um, and read it, but it has to be in regards to, this is what a budget hearing, right? Oh, this is a second reason, it has to be, uh, regarding the second reading or adoption ordinance O two dash twenty twenty five. Okay? So I have, uh, Joseph Jakuta, twenty ninth street. Go ahead, Joseph.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I just wanted to first say that it was, it is great as I followed through this budget uh, process this year to see the collaboration amongst all the city council members and staff in developing a solid budget for the city. Um, and it's, uh, it's been, uh, put together with, uh, great stewardship for the, uh, the future given our tough economic times. And also it is not your, not the council's fault anyway, but it is despairing to see how hemmed in we can be by, uh, the state, um, and I definitely think it would be, um, as as, uh, the fu- the future, uh, entails to, uh, you know, go forth and get more flexibility when it comes to setting some of our rates. Or in some, uh, in particular, I think with the vacancies, um, or the, the vacant buildings. Because, uh, there's can be, we can do so much more if we had more flexibility in many of these issue areas. Uh, but I again commend you all for your, your great work on this budget. I appreciate it as a resident of Mount Rainier.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jenny, I see it, but I'm not sure what do you want me to do with your, so when, um, when you're here, so I need to know whether you wanna speak, name, last name and, uh, block number on the chat. So we have it for the record, uh, whether you need me to read your comment, let me know as well. So, um, can you type it down and let me know which of them do you want me to do? Jenny? Can you type to see, um, do you wanna read the comment, name, last name and block number? Okay, in the meantime, let me go, as you type that, let me go to Facebook, um, to give me guidance. So what do you want me to do with your comment? So, um, can, uh, Jared with a D, um, anything on Facebook so far? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Jenny, um, are you, can you type or do you need me to read your comment? Which is, what is it that you need me to do?
Uh, I, 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 I did type.
Okay, so you want me to read it? I usually ask if people want me to read it. If not, sometimes they just put it there.
I.
Oh, you could read it, it's fine.
Sorry, I thought I was typing, I, I typed the wrong thing. Um, so I, I just, you can read my comment.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'll, I'll add my, um, address.
Okay, that's fine. So usually we do it so that we keep record of who's on if we have to follow up with something. Okay, thank you so much. It says, why is the balance of the city's rainy day fund af- or what is the, oh, sorry. What is the balance of the city's rainy day fund after the increase to one point five million dollars? So that'd be, uh, Ron or Mr. Kamali question, after we move, uh, remove funds to, for Potts Hall. What is the, what's gonna be the total for the, um, rainy fund?
Let, I'll let Ron to respond to that, so Ron.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I can't give you an exact number, but, uh, it will, it, it is going to be in the neighborhood of about six months worth of budget or half a year's budget, uh, will, will remain in the re- rainy day fund.
Yeah, we'll have that number, um, updated in the next meeting, cause this was just a quick discussion. And then we'll have it when we go ahead and have the first reading. So like, so they'll be able to tell us like removing that money, how much money is left. And, um, okay, thank you Jenny, good question. Alright, and I have Jenny for forty two hundred block of thirty first street. Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. Alright, so anybody else? Let me know. Okay, so I don't see nobody typing anything, nothing on Facebook yet neither. Okay, so I'm gonna close public comments at this point and we'll move on to, um, the, uh, the second reading and adoption of this document after we finish reading it. So this is, um, is this a six page document, Ron Wilson or Meli? Correct? So do me a favor. So I'm gonna have, uh, Valerie, can you go ahead and read that wording? And when it gets to the numbers, I'm gonna ask Ron Wilson if he could like step in and help us with the numbers, okay? So you guys go alternate, cause that was a lot of reading last time. We read, so on April first, we read the whole entire document, word by word, number by number, line item by line item. So it has been fully read. So this is like the second reading and it's open for vote. Okay, so Valerie, you could start and then like once it gets to the numbers, we'll like alternate with, uh, with Ron Wilson, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, an ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Whereas in accordance with section six dash three oh three of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland, by July fifteenth of each year, the council of the City of Mount Rainier shall set the tax rate for the next fiscal year on all assessments of property subject to municipal corporation property tax and whereas a public hearing must be held prior to the establishment of the municipal corporation tax rate. If the new tax rate will exceed the previous tax year rate and as calculated by the state of Mar- the State of Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. And whereas the proposed tax rate for some property classifications for fiscal year twenty twenty six will exceed the blended constant yield tax rate of, um, seventy six point eighty five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And whereas pursuant to the City of Mount Rainier Charter, section seven oh two point A, uh, the city manager submitted the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six to the council for its review, um, its review and consideration. And whereas the budget provides a complete financial plan for fiscal year twenty twenty six and contains estimates of anticipated revenue and proposed expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. And whereas the City of Mount Rainier Charter, section seven oh two point B requires the council to conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget prior to the adoption of the budget. And whereas the council held a public hearing on the tax rate and to receive comments on the proposed fiscal twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty six budget and the, and tax on March twenty two, twenty twenty five and whereas after considering the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty six budget submitted by the city manager and the co- the comments that were made at the public hearing on the budget and tax rate, the council adopts the budget and tax rate as a fourth in this ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that blank day of blank twenty twenty five as follows. Section one, tax rate real property. The tax rate for all single family residential property real, residential real property subject to taxation by the City of Mount Rainier shall be seventy five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. The tax rate for all townhouse residential properties subject to taxation by the City of Mount Rainier shall be seventy five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Uh, the tax rate for all multi-family resident, re- residential real property subject to taxation by the City of Mount Rainier shall be eighty six cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal. shall be eighty six cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. The tax rate for all commercial real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. The tax rate for all industrial real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. The ta- uh the tax rate for all vacant developed real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be two dollars and fifty cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Section two, tax rate business personal property. The tax rate for all business personal property subject to the taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be ninety nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed value for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Section three, tax rate operating property of railroads and public utilities. The tax rate for all operating property of railroads and public utilities subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be two dollars and seventy five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Section four, general fund revenues. Following amounts uh shall be adopted and appro-
Valerie, do you wanna, you want Ron to start reading from this point now? You wanna finish this space and he reads the next one?
Uh, sure, he can read it, it's fine.
Alright, Ron, we're we're gonna have you like step in and and help us out, because I know that last time was a lot. Go ahead.
Okay, so section four, general fund revenues. Following amounts shall be adopted and appropriated as the general fund budget for all revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Tax revenue, six million, six hundred and eighty thousand, twenty one dollars and fifty seven cents. Licenses and permits, six hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred dollars. Intergovernmental revenue, six hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy six cents. Charges for services, twenty six thousand, two hundred dollars. Fines and forfeitures, eight hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Miscellaneous, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Grants, two million, six hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Total budgeted revenue, eleven million, six hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty three cents. Section five, general fund expenditure categories. The following amounts shall be adopted and appropriated as the general fund budget for all expenditure categories for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Wages and lead pay, three million, six hundred and five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and ninety four cents. Employee benefits and services, two million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty one cents. Materials and supplies, two hundred and sixty five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Repairs and maintenance, one hundred and thirty nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Professional services, eight hundred and seventy four thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty one cents. Other services and charges, three hundred and eighty nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars and thirty five cents. Community activities, two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Infrastructure and facilities maintenance, nine hundred and thirty three thousand, six hundred dollars. Capital outlay for capital projects, one hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Debt services, two hundred and thirty six thousand, ninety five dollars and twenty two cents. Grant expense, two million, six hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Total budgeted expenditures, eleven million, six hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty three cents. Section six, general fund expenditure categories by department. The following amounts shall be adopted and appropriated as the general fund budget for all expenditure categories by department for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. City governance, seventy two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. City hall, three million, seven hundred and thirty four thousand, six hundred and six dollars and forty one cents. Administrative services, seven hundred and thirty eight thousand, three hundred and ninety six dollars and eighty cents. Code compliance, um five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty five hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty three dollars and seventy four cents. Economic Development Department, three hundred and fifty one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty nine cents. Police Department, three million, eight hundred and fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty three cents. Public Works Department, two million, sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and eighty eight cents. Debt services, two hundred and thirty six thousand, ninety five dollars and twenty two cents. Contingency, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty two dollars and thirty five cents. Total budgeted department expenditures, eleven million, six hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty three cents. Total full-time equivalent employees.
I could read that one, Ron, will you get some water?
Yeah.
So I'll give you a small break, okay? A total full-time equivalent employees, also known as FTEs, for each department are as follow. Um, and I'll read the budget FY twenty six one, although you could see they're the same, right? City hall, three. Administrative services, five. Code compliance, four. Economic development, one. Police department, twenty three. Public works, ten. Total budget FTEs for FY twenty six is forty six. There is no change between budget twenty four, twenty five and now twenty six. It stays the same. Move it up. Okay, this ordinance is adopted by the city cons, by, can you go, uh the council of the city of Mount Rainier? This fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty five and it's effective on July first, twenty twenty five. And then you have the signature line for um the clerk and the rest of us. Alright, so thank you so much, Ron and Valerie, for the read through. It does help when we cut it off just a little bit, right? Okay, so move it out to the top. Thank you so much. So you have heard the second reading and this um ordinance O two dash twenty twenty five is up for vote today. And it's in our establishing the tax rate, adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty six, beginning July first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. So I'll make the motion so that way you guys don't have to read through the whole thing. Motion to approve ordinance O two dash twenty twenty five establishing the tax rate, adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year FY twenty six, beginning July first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objections, extensions, hearing none? We have officially passed the budget for FY twenty five, twenty six. Good job, everyone. That's definitely good, because I know the staff is working very heavily on it. And I think this is one of the earliest times that we have been able to pass the budget. Uh Ron, uh Mr. Kamali, um this Lee Natalie and the whole entire team that has worked with it, you know, with this budget um from the communities of directors to provide information to our team. Thank you guys so much. Um, it definitely takes a weight out of us. And I know sometimes the concerns are what happens, things changes at the federal and state level. Well, that's what budget amendments are there for, and we have a good team like I was mentioning earlier that are, you know, following everything that's happening in order to make sure we make the adjustments we need to. But this is the first step to be able to follow through in what it looks like. Um, in the June meeting, in the May uh June meeting, we are gonna be discussing our priorities, so that way the staff will get to work uh when it comes to the summer. So we're looking forward to also doing that, alright? Perfect. So uh for the record, unanimously uh passed, okay? Thank you. Uh moving on to item number five. Um, adjournment of the meeting, uh motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
If I make the, you, it's okay, because I didn't say, I didn't say the full motion, you're good. Move by Chesek, uh uh second by Stoffus, right? Um, any discussion? Abstentions, objections, hearing none? Um, this meeting has come to nayn at seven fifty six PM. So staff, we didn't keep you guys longer than we needed to. I know you guys have been working many hours on this budget. So thank you guys so much uh for your work and to all of our residents that joined us today. And I see you guys. Alright, talk to you guys soon and we'll tell you guys uh when the next uh, when the art commission is coming. I'm assuming it's the next meeting. I know you guys being eager to wait for the information. So bye, everyone. Thank you, Stockholm. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.